All right, I think we're ready to get started. We have everybody here. Welcome, everyone. My name is Bill Gahn. I'm the president of City Council. We have Dr. Rothschild with us, Councilman McCandrew, Councilman Schuster, Councilman Donahue, we have Mayor Cogdetti, Business Administrator Carl Dealey, our Solicitor Kevin Hayes, and our City Clerk Lori Reed with us tonight. The purpose of tonight's work session is to take a look at the 2021 budget. So the mayor and Mr. Dealey will be presenting the budget to us. I have not really had an opportunity to look at the documents that were provided because we received them very late in the day today. So I'll be kind of following along as this is presented. So we'll allow the mayor and the business administrator to make their presentation and then we'll take questions afterwards. Okay? Mayor and Mr. Dealey, thanks for being with us and I'll turn the floor over to you.
Thank you. So I really appreciate the opportunity to have this work session. As you all know, the budget is technical. Technically, it's due on the 15th. So we will, we'll get the full budget, the full final submission to you tomorrow. But we wanted to present to you tonight kind of the overview, the narrative, the big picture. And so you'll see that in the document that we sent along with the top line revenues and the top line expenditures. So you'll get, you'll get the full detail of that over the weekend. We thought tonight was a great opportunity just to introduce our thought process and how we, how we view, how we view this budget being the first budget that, that we're presenting to you. So I, it kind of goes without saying, but I think it's important kind of to state for the record what kind of year we've all had, not just in Scranton, but in Pennsylvania and throughout the entire country. It has been a year of surprises, to say the least. You know, we, the, I guess it was the 10th week that, that you all were council people together and I was mayor, we ended up, you know, shutting down the city essentially, you know, going online for city services, schools were closing, we furloughed workers, which was so, so difficult, but necessary. And we'll get, get into some of that. But it's, it's been a year like no other. And I think that it's important to frame this conversation and our this, you know, the coming weeks as we talk about this budget. I think it's important to keep that frame because to ignore the economic realities and the reasons behind those economic realities as we try to budget for 2021, I think, I think would be a mistake. So there's a kind of an overview at the beginning of the document of things that we've done, which, you know, you guys are aware of. But I just wanted to say that I'm proud that what we've been able to accomplish despite all of the challenges this year, despite the economic downturn and despite the impact it's had on our city and especially on families and small businesses. I think that, that we've done a good job as a city to continue to get resources to our community and to keep all of our services running at, at a steady clip from police to fire to code enforcement to public works and then our administrative city services as well, for example, in treasury. So in terms of expenditures, year to date, we are on track and we, you know, the caveat's always there, you know, this is our first full year. And if there's something hiding in the woodwork that we don't know about, I, you know, I would never say never. But we, we are on track to fall, to fall, fall within anticipated, now anticipated revenues. We've done a really good job. Carl, Dealey has done an excellent job managing the city finances carefully and strictly as we've tried to mitigate these crises. And as you all know, I mean, part of that was furloughing employees from the, the same day that we closed City Hall to the public, making some really tough calls that other cities didn't make, other city governments didn't make until, or even state governments or county governments didn't make until months later. So we had foresight into what this year could bring and what subsequent years could bring. And as difficult as that has been for, for many people in the city, and I'm deeply appreciative of the sacrifices they made, it's helped us stay on a path to be able to, again, continue to have the services that the city residents need. So-
Mayor, I don't want to interrupt you, but are you able to share your screen if you're gonna go through the-
Oh, sure.
We can.
Okay. I'm just thinking of the, the public that's watching, just so they could follow on.
Before we get started as well, if somebody has that second, the narrative didn't come through. It's not working on my end. I do have the first document, but I don't have the second document. If somebody could just forward that over. Thank you.
Is the PDF not opening or?
Yeah, the PDF.
Can you see that now?
Yeah, we can see it on our screen.
Not in that same issue. Do you need me to forward it again?
Yeah, if somebody has it up on the screen and you get forwarded. Yeah, it's just a PDF that's not working.
Okay. 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 So as we look ahead to next year, we built this budget using the same frame that we use to manage through this year. It's strict enough here, but we are doing our best not to compromise essential city services. There are other mayors that I've been in contact with who are looking at potential cuts to police, to fire, to public works, to services that I, we, everyone on this call and everyone in the city hope that we would never have to do. We are trying to build this budget so that we do not have to do that and try to continue to manage through this. Going one step further to that, we are hoping to map out, we have mapped out a city organization that's better suited to manage a modern city government for a city of this size of, you know, 80,000 people. I think by the time we get through with the census, we can't, we have to get our house in order in city government in the short term. We have to plan for long-term success. And if we don't get a better, more modern management structure in now, it's going to be very, very difficult to do that. I think that you all have seen what some, some great new employees can do in business administration and Treasury Department and the Office of Economic Development. Leadership means a lot and the structure that we've created is to help us get to, get to that next level in city government. So you'll also see with that, that we need, we need to make sure that people are compensated for their skills and talents and the tasks that we are asking them to perform. Three, and three of you that were on the Scranton School Board and know what the, the salary comparisons can look like from the city to the school district. And we are, we are low compared to nearly every government entity nearby us and low compared to the cities of comparable size in Pennsylvania, which you'll see there's a couple of charts about that later in the document. We're trying to do what we can to take that next step. It's still, what we're proposing is still far lower than what other cities of our size in Pennsylvania pay their senior management. But we need to be able to recruit, we need to be able to have people running at the level that, that people like Carl are in order to, to make this happen. So we are looking forward to being able to have a structure that, that makes more sense. And it includes a couple of big moves, which we've walked you guys through, but we'll walk through a little bit later. Some structural moves where we reposition some of the departments. I think we'll be more efficient.
Mayor, do you have a listing of the, like the positions with the raises? I was looking through it. I don't see it in here. Like a, a position, like whatever the position was and then whatever the increase was from last year?
Yeah.
Yeah, that all, so all of that, you guys will get all of that tomorrow. We just wanted to do the top line, top line stuff today, but all of that, all of that, all of that you'll get tomorrow. And for the public and the press, this, but this, we're trying to chart out a, with Councilman Gahan, a process where we're having very frequent conversations like this. So we're really talking through this, but the budget's not actually due tomorrow. That's why it says draft. We're still working on this and all, every conversation that we have helps us fine tune things and make sure that to the best of our ability, what we're presenting for final submission is, is truly final. But yeah, you'll, you'll see, you'll, you will see all of that tomorrow. The structure, you'll, you'll see the, the structure proposals here. But the main, I'd say the main point is raising the, raising some of the directors in line with, at about around $75,000, which is again, is still, it's still less than most peer cities and having a tier between about 50 to 60,000 for managers underneath those directors. You'll see Mr. Dealey has very graciously taken a, a proposed large pay cut himself to get down to that 75 range so that we're more consistent across our senior management team. So in, in addition to organization and just better, much better controls, much better fiscal responsibility, much better management of, of the costs and expenditures, we want to invest, you know, that's the human capital side is, is a lot of the organization, the technology systems, the physical infrastructure that we need to repair in the city to be able to recruit new residents, recruit new businesses, attract investment. We have to do all these things now to improve our long-term financial health, in term, improve our long-term financial health. We also, as you all know, are going to be working, some of us, all of us together on, looking at some tax reform options that in running parallel to all of this, I think gives us a real shot at achieving the, the long-term economic growth that we think Scranton deserves and that we sincerely hope for the city. The other piece too is, is kind of a cultural piece around the budget. A budget is not cash. This is not a, this is not, if you have a department budget, it doesn't mean like, oh, here's your, here's your cash account, just go spend it. Carl's done an excellent job making sure that that's not the, the attitude here. And this is, you know, this is an attitude in private sector, public sector, all throughout, that a budget is cash. That is not the case. That, that's very clear here. These are taxpayers' hard-earned dollars. We're working every day to be responsible with them. And we think that this budget, while it's, it's, it's tough in some of the things that we've had to cut and it's, it's also a document to help set us up for success in the long term. And we'll go, we'll go further into our proposals on the, the revenues and expenditure side. But I think you'll see, and again, back to making sure that we're acknowledging the moment that we're in with our masks on and the thank you poster behind me. The revenues that we would in a normal year be on track for are not coming. And we are being realistic about that. And you will see that especially in the wage tax projections. I, all the numbers, we've been running them and running and running them. If it weren't for COVID and this economic crisis, we would be on track to balance this budget completely without, without any, a need for any solution. That's not where we are. Unfortunately, the, you know, the federal government hasn't come through with, with any help with indirect funding for cities. The care, we haven't even gotten CARES Act money yet. But, but we do believe that'll be coming soon, but we certainly haven't seen it yet. So we, were it not for these crises, we would be really, we really, really would be on track, I think, to, to balance without help. But that's not where we're at. And so we'll get, we'll get to that in a moment in our proposal for that. But I'll kick it over to Carl to walk through some of the processes in some more detail.
Thank you, ma'am. So to start with, we, we approached the budget maybe differently to maybe what was patterned before in the city. And this has very much been a kind of a bottom-up process in order to support the, the, the vision of the mayor, right? So in terms of the reason the mayor was elected, in terms of what we're trying to do, it's really based on the, the goals and the objectives, right, that were put in place when the mayor first came into office. So the idea of the budget is, and as the mayor said, it's to ensure we've got sufficient funds, right, and cash flow available so that we can actually deliver, deliver those goals. And, and in particular, I think for going into 2021, is, I see this very much as a recovery year. I think we've got, you know, as we've all experienced, and I think probably, and what we're forecasting is going into definitely the first quarter, maybe the first half of next year, right? We're gonna maybe see similar conditions. And obviously, we're right in the middle of a, a second wave of the pandemic right now and it's still, still, you know, getting momentum. So the approach here was very much to take a look at, first of all, the city goals, what is it we're trying to achieve? And, and this is not short-term either. This is not just a one-year goal. It's where do we want to be in the next three to five years? And one of the things we need to look at is what's the, what is the infrastructure that we need in order to attract people and businesses to a city like Scranton? So we've, we've got to create some, some compelling message here for people to come to Scranton. Now, to support that, there's certain services and obviously performances that we've got to have, right, to make us attractive. And to support that, we need revenue. So the budget very much is around, how do we balance that out, right? How do we provide the services with the revenues that are coming in? And then in order to make change, and this is the key thing here, is we don't just want to be going into next year just to do the same things we did this year, right? That, that's no way for us to move forward as a city. So the things that you'll see in the budget and the things you'll see if you go through the next couple of parts of the narrative is the things that we believe we need to change in order to grow the city. All right. So this budget has definitely got a two to three-year view on it, right, as we move forward. And definitely the first year, 2021, is very much a recovery year. It's a year for us to, to kind of get our house in order and to create a capability, right, to drive growth in the city. I said here, it's, it's a very iterative process. And although we've got obviously a lot of fixed costs, everybody's aware, there's things that, a lot of the budget is fixed, right, which are due to expenses, you know, which are controlled by the CBA. And yeah, that's about 90% of the budget. And, and of course, then on the revenue side, the realization is, you know, it's, it's, this is a forecast, right? It's inherently variable and various numerous economic factors. And in particular, obviously, we've got some, like the COVID-19 epidemic is one of the big ones, obviously, that we're, we're struggling with right now. And that's why, you know, we call them, it's an austerity budget, right? This is going into next year, we'll be very conservative in terms of the realization of revenues. There's a lot of unknowns going into next year. With that in mind, the budget schedule, so the proposal here is that we'll do a mid-year review. Now, we will always have an original budget. So the budget, obviously, which goes through this year, we'll, we'll always be reporting against that original budget. But I think with the uncertainty that we have going into next year, that I think it's going to be necessary to do a revised budget. And that will then help us to-
Explore our revised-
Sorry, yeah, explore, yes.
Yeah, Carl, when you, when you, when you say that, right, and we've talked about this before-
Yep.
I, I think I understand what you're saying, but like, are, are you talking about, so if you get more revenue in than you were expecting, like, are you making an actual, any, like amendments to the budget that would have to come back before council? Or is this just, hey, we're, we're just looking at this and revising it because the numbers may have changed? I'm not, could you explain that in a little bit more detail?
Yeah, so the first thing is, and the point you make is, is right on point. I mean, if the revenues, for example, are being realized maybe better than we anticipate, then it makes sense that we should look at that second half of the year. And also, what I'd like to do, start to think about the following year, right? So mid-year, 2021, I'd like to do a forecast going out through 2022 as well, right? So, so that we can start to look early on in terms of the, the larger projects and the things that we want to do with the city. Now, to your point, now, is this a formal budget? Do we come back to council? Do we have legislation? Do we actually formally change the budget? I think that's up for discussion in terms of whether we do that or not. Definitely, I think it's always good practice to report against the original budget. And there's nothing stopping us just working to the original budget, having that, that kind of second deep dive, right, as we get through the second quarter to see what's been realized in terms of revenues, how's our expenditures going? And then what we can do is we can maybe adjust the activities, right, that we've got planned for the rest of the year and then start to plan for 2022. So I think, I think to your point, we can probably do either. I think one is we can make a formal adjustment budget, or we can just report against the original. But I think we are, in fact, one of the things that we've already tried to do here is that we, we are looking at the, the cash flows, obviously now on a weekly basis. And the intention is, is that from a reporting point of view, and I, and I think council obviously have been very proactive here, I think in terms of asking for information on a frequent basis. What I'd like to do is just to have a standard monthly report, right, against the budgets, you know, the plan against actual, so that, you know, again, we've got more transparency, which is again, one of the items, right, the mayor's, that the mayor came into office on, is transparency from a financial perspective. So first of all, we'll have governance, which is maybe a lot more frequent, a lot more stringent than it has been. But it's just good practice that when you're halfway through the year, that's, you know, you've got, you're a lot closer now to the, the actual realization of the revenues for the year. But also, it's a good time to start thinking about the following year. Because some things, I think, need more dialogue. I think, and this is a good example, right? I think you're, you know, we're sitting here in November and we're planning out 2021. And I think it's, it's going to be much better for us if we're, if kind of June, July period, and we're starting to talk about 2022. It's, I think it's going to be much better for the city. I think we'll have much deeper dialogue, much richer dialogue in terms of what we need. And that will also then give us more time to prepare, right, for that 2022 budget.
Carl, this is Kevin Hayes. And I, I, I know you're probably aware of this. There are just certain restrictions that we have to follow, set forth in Article Nine of the Home Rule Charter, where the council has to approve an annual budget. Some other words, we, we would never be able to have a six-month budget, or we wouldn't be able to amend the budget six months into the year under the Home Rule Charter. But I understand much of what you're saying is just to make sure that we have a monthly or quarterly inventory of where we, where we stand so that we know what, what's the best approach for the 2022 budget.
Yep, absolutely.
I just want to make sure that that's on everybody's radar screen.
And we'd rather, we would rather do this, kind of approach it like a mid-year check, and that involves you all tracking where we are and planning, planning for that second half of the year, planning for that 2022. You know, we're, we're sitting here with you guys tonight. We sit here many, many nights with you. We, we want this to be, you know, a transparent process. We're going back and forth and what we're, we don't want to only be talking about the budget once a year.
So the main influences, so as we said, the, the top line here is austerity going into the, into the year. I think with the, there's so many, there's more negative impacts, I think, than positives. So I think we can see right now. And with the, not just through COVID-19, but obviously, we now have projections of higher unemployment through next year. And in terms of the, the unemployment rates, that, you know, I've got some data further down in, in the narrative, but you know, it's, it looks like it's going to be somewhere between like seven and nine percent. And obviously through COVID, it's, it's been double that. So again, kind of going into, going into next year, we've got austerity in mind. The other key things that we're looking for, and these are the things that are obviously important to, I think, be the mayor's plan. So big, big focus, public health. So you'll see some in the, in the budget where we, you know, we've made some organizational changes and also from the allocation of revenues, the accountability and integrity to the, obviously, city governments. So again, one thing I just talked about was in terms of the more frequent updates and availability of information. That will also- So one of the things too is, you know, in line with that, obviously, the capital projects that we talked about back in October, the, the biggest project, which obviously is going to really take most of the time for the city next year, is the introduction of the new operating platform. And that will be a big part of having that transparency of information, both for the community to, to link into, but also for, for reporting and just making it easier for people to, to dig into the level of detail that they, that they need, rather than, like today, we have a lot of write-to-knows, obviously, we have a lot of questions come through council. It's going to make it a lot easier, I think, for people to, to get the information that they're looking for. The other piece in there is the whistleblower hotline, which we're introducing this year. And again, this is just obviously a good practice. And it just means that this, we've got a complete oversight in terms of the ability for people to, to raise concerns independently. Community engagement, so part of the, one of the big organization changes that we've made, which we'll go through in a moment, is really focused around engaging the communities. Again, we've already started that this year, obviously by taking the City Hall ads, you know, add onto the streets, which has been very successful. I think we got some great feedback and certainly, I think, given us some, some food for thought in, in, for the 2021 budget. The restructuring of city government, also the organization piece, this is the bit that then the mayor was just talking about, is in order to retain and attract people to city government, we've got to have more of a career outlook. And, and I can speak from experience, right? It's, it's very difficult, I think, to attract the people that you need to run the city. And, you know, with the, the structures that we have, the career paths that we have, and the salaries that we have, and obviously, that's going to be, that's reflected in issues, but it's as well. And then the, the other piece there is the, the IT capability. Obviously, we do struggle in terms of just the manipulation of information, the integrity of the data. And obviously, we did have a, a major cyber attack this year, which obviously caused us a lot of issues. Obviously, that now, we're, we're pretty much over, but there's still some restructuring to be done, I think, to kind of take us out of harm's way. But certainly, in terms of running a modern city, we need, we need to look like one. We need to make some pretty significant changes to City Hall, how it looks, how it runs every day. Other things to think about for 2021, as the end of this year, is the collective bargaining agreements. So we are currently obviously working with the technical union. We have DPW as well at the end of this year. But then going into next year, obviously, it's police and fire. And, and obviously, in terms of the expenditure for the city, kind of, you know, 90, 90% of our expenditure, you know, is, is really dictated by the CBA. So this is obviously going to have a big impact on, on the plans for next year and going forward, obviously, for the 2022 and beyond. So it's good, I think, everybody has that on the table. And, you know, we've got to look at things very holistically. And obviously, we're looking forward to, you know, to sitting down with the unions and, you know, kind of going through what we need to do in the next three to five years. So what we've done, and we started this, this year, is this, this whole narrative around small stuff matters, it truly does. We've started making cuts this year already. And so fortunately, it started early. We're tracking quite well in relationship to the, the realized revenues for this year. So, so right now, we're within like one or two percent, our expenditures are within like one or two percent of the revenues. And I think we're currently at about 90 million or for our revenues against the, the target of 103. And then expenditures around, I think, the 86 million mark. So, you know, we're doing quite well, but it's all about the detail. And so there's some examples here of things that we're doing, you know, to, to kind of just take out the, 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 they are not necessities, but some, some of these are necessities, which really putting down as best we can, you know, on the, on the small items. So what's changing for 2021? Okay, first, improving the competitiveness, right, is the key thing. Designing the organizations, and we'll say, we'll go through that, the detail of that right now. And the, in terms of the- following, yeah, following the strategic plan, right, for public health and safety transparency. And also, the one we didn't talk about was process efficiency, right, which is going to be a big subject for us next year, right? So again, as I said earlier, this is really about getting our house in order next year and kind of really an opportunity for us, I think, to get ready for maybe an improved times, right, going- And kind of really an opportunity for us, I think, to get ready for maybe an improved times, right, going into 2022 and beyond. So part of the administration's goals next year are efficiency improvements in the way that we do business. And again, the part of that is going to be the new IT platform. But certainly kind of people, process and technology, right, are the, the kind of three legs, right, of this stool that we, that we've been focusing on as part of the budget. And we'll talk about that, say, right now in terms of the modifications to the organization.
Carl, can I, can I just ask one question about the last line there? It says about not all new positions will be funded in 2021, but, you know, you want to, you want to show what the long-term vision is for what the government should look like as the economy and tax elections and that hopefully go up.
Yep.
Can you expand upon that? Because I, I just, and maybe how many positions would be in the budget that you're not actually funding? And would there be, would the thought process on, on your end be that at some point in 2021, you know, some of these positions you may try to fund? Because I, I think I, and I'm only speaking for myself, but I, I would have a hard time, you know, putting a position in the budget and not fund it, you know, if it's not going to be funded. I understand if you want to create a secondary document where you say, hey, next year, you know, three years down the road, we might want to do this. But to make it an actual line item and not fund it, to me, doesn't, I, I don't, I don't understand that.
No, you, and in the budget, the, the positions that are not going to be funded are not in the budget.
Okay.
Yep, so to your point, you, you make a good point. And the intention really here is that, again, this is starting to look forward, right? And I said earlier, the looking forward to 2022 and beyond, what we did, we stood back and said, what, in terms of the way we'd like to run the city, in terms of what does it need to drive the city? And so we, that's how we looked at the organization to start with. But then we stepped back and looked at what can we afford to do in 2021, right? So that, that was the rationale. So on the organization charts, you'll see that there are some, some positions that are on there, but they are not going to be funded and they will not happen in 2021. But the plan being, and again, this is why I'd like to, again, we want, we want to revisit this kind of mid-year next year, right? Because these are the kind of things that we want to prepare for. And, and maybe we don't need these other positions, right, that we're looking at right now, or maybe we need more. So the intent here is to, to have an ongoing kind of dialogue around what does the city need now? And what does the city need in the future? But to your point there, the, the, the positions in the budgets that are funded and the ones that that maybe on the, on the charts you'll see here are not in the budget, if they're not funded.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's, I think it's five or six that are in these org charts, but not, but not funded. The one, there's one, maybe two. There's a, there's a grant writer that we'd like to see if we could fund mid-year grant writers, you know, kind of pay for themselves. But that, but proposing that though, we would put that half year funding in the budget. There would be half a year's salary in the budget for you all to consider and approve. The engine, the DPW, Public Works Engineer, we don't, we still, we have an engineering contract through, through June. We'd like to hire that position as early as April first, which would save, you know, save us salary in those first four months. Enable us to have overlap time with that engineer. So that position would exist in 2021, but we would not hire that person until, until mid-year essentially. But again, that, that fifty thousand or whatever that two-thirds of a year is, would be in, in the budget.
Yeah, I, you know, I.
Things like communication manager are not, that's a, that's something that we think the city of this size needs, but not something that's realistic for 2021. So it's here in these organization charts, I think it's important to show all the hard work that we've been putting in this year and what we've come up with in terms of what the structure should look like. But we're being realistic about what that would look like.
Yeah. I think I, I, I understand what you're saying, the, and, you know, not to get into the weeds on this just yet, but the grant writer. I don't know how that would work in only putting in, only budgeting half the salary. And then, I mean, what would happen if, you know, you couldn't find the funding and that person would just be let go mid-year? I don't know, I think it'd be hard to find somebody. I think it'd be hard to hire someone by saying, hey, you're guaranteed a job up until the middle of the year, but unless.
Reverse is true.
Yeah.
The reverse, we mean, would we, we wouldn't hire this person, wouldn't hire this person until July first.
To finish out the rest of the year?
And beyond, yeah.
Well, and beyond.
Yeah.
But you, but you would fund that and that would be a line item in the budget with whatever that half a year's salary would be?
That is correct, yeah.
Okay.
We're trying, we're trying to find ways to balance the needs, the things that we need and what we see with the, the economic reality. So, and with contracts, so in the case of an engineer, we, we have, we have that contract for six months. We would want some overlap, given the nature of that job. We don't want to, we don't need to have the overlap these six full months, and so we don't, we can save that third of a year salary.
Now, do you, on the engineer side of it, do you think that? I can't remember how it works with the current engineer, but I think you get the, you get the city engineer and I think you also get the firm or more than just one person. So if you're just hiring one engineer, are you losing anything? But I mean, I just would try to maybe think about that and weigh that out on what you might be losing by not having more than one person.
Yeah, I think the one you're talking about is we pay like sixty-three hundred a month, right, for the, for the, to the engineering company. But we have an engineer basically that is that the kind of lead that we work with. And to your point is, obviously what you've got behind that engineer is in theory, yeah, you've got you've got some support, right, and behind there. And that, that would certainly be part of it, yeah, that was, I think, part of the I think part of the considerations. But what we believe is that we need a civil engineer, I think, as part of the city. Someone that is, you know, kind of there twenty-four, well, not twenty-four seven, but certainly, you know, there kind of when we need them and they can follow the project through and have that competency in-house. Just because, you know, the, the efficiency of the communications and the continuity. Now, if we do need additional engineering services, you know, that's maybe not in the competence, right, of the, within the city, then also that would have to be, you know, possibly contracted out. Yeah, which we do already.
There's, there's already within that contract we have, there's already a lot of additional contracted services, things that that engineering contract is not included.
Okay.
So, so structurally, um, there's, you know, there's a mayor's office with the addition of the chief of staff. Uh, which is very important to, to enable me to, to function and Carl to function. We do a lot of, a lot of management, which we'll continue to do, but we need, we need another other person running with us at, at the, kind of at the executive level to help manage the organization. The, I bucketed this with public safety, fire, police, public works. It's important to me that you guys will see in greater detail tomorrow. It's really important to me that we are elevating public works as a public safety agency. They're the ones that are out there, if a traffic light goes out, they're there, if there's a flood, they're there, if it's snowing. They really keep us safe twenty-four seven alongside police and fire. So I want, in the budget, you'll see that there's a couple of management positions that we, or maybe, maybe it's just one management position with the engineer. I don't have it in front of me, but we really want to make sure that that, that department is getting the support that they need for the twenty-six miles, twenty-six square miles and eighty thousand people that, that they serve every, every day. That piece is there, you'll see also a, a new position there would be a deputy police superintendent. That's something that has been proposed before and has not been successful. We will continue to propose that. It's a very, it's, again, it's a very large organization, it's extremely important that those, those men and women are out there every day for us. But it's also important that, that there's enough of a management structure with such an important agency. So some of the key changes are pulling, is that you'll see the neighborhood engagement and parks and recreation. Parks and recreation maintenance is going to move over into DPW. That's, this is not, this has happened before, I think it, there were both iterations have been out there in the city before. We think that having maintenance in the Department of Public Works will work better. It's just the tool, you know, literally the tools are there, the management of that type could happen very well under that supervision within public works. And that would free up a parks and rec manager to really focus on the study we're doing with Tom McLean to fix to prioritize the repair and, and the rehabilitation and the augmentation of some of our parks. Really focus on recreation, we don't, we don't do enough on recreation for our kids. A city of this size with, with the poverty levels we have especially, we need to be ramping that up.
So is the, is the neighborhood engagement and recreation director, is that a new position?
Yes, well, the.
It will be a name change, so what we have, the, it was the, yeah, the, well, first was the deputy, DPW, so the lips deputy, right?
So the, there's, right now, there's a parks and rec director, now that will be neighborhood parks and rec, neighborhood engagement parks and recreation. Underneath that will be a parks manager, that parks manager position is what is new.
Yeah, isn't, I, I don't know if I, okay, I, I, I just, I wonder if we're almost creating like, I think I know, I, I know what you're saying, but I wonder if we're creating like more bureaucracy in that specific thing, because we have a neighborhood engagement and recreation director and then a parks and recreation manager, like, it just seems like that would almost be.
So the parks manager, the parks manager would report into the director. Because there's, in order for us to maintain thirty-two parks and not just maintain them, but do what we need to do in prioritizing and project managing the rehab of some of those parks. And to also run recreational programs. That person would report into the director who would help with those things, but in addition, would be running things like the mayor's volunteer corps. Various other volunteer organizations within, within the city so that we're, we're really, we're really going at a full clip with our neighborhood engagement, community engagement, those pop-up city halls, that person would run those pop-up city halls. That department needs to have two people, honestly, you know, over time, it should have a, probably a junior coordinator as well. But you really, you really can't just have one person trying to do all of those things, it's impossible and it's, it's very important to the city.
Okay, so the neighborhood engagement, and just so I have this straight, the neighborhood engagement and recreation director is actually the deputy director from the lips department, but you're just changing the title, correct?
No, that, the, the person that I would like to hire into that position is currently the deputy director of lips.
Okay, so then this neighborhood, this is a new position then, correct? The neighborhood engagement.
You can look at it either, either way, you can look at it as that the director position exists in parks director and the park manager position is, is new.
Okay, I, I get it now, okay.
And I'm sorry, that says neighborhood engagement, it should say neighborhood parks and recreation.
Okay.
I know that we spoke about this last week, but will you be providing us with the job descriptions for these new positions? We have a better understanding of.
Yes, I don't, I don't think that we will have all of the job descriptions tomorrow with the rest of the budget. So that, to the point of all of this, there's a lot of work and we have a pretty lean team. So the job descriptions will, will get those to you, but I don't think they'll come tomorrow as a, with the package.
Okay, thank you.
Now, going back, going back in regard to the, the grant writer, who's currently writing the grants?
Actually, we'll maybe cover that in the next one, right? Because, yeah, yeah, we'll cover that in the next slide, if that's okay, councilman? Because we, we covered that piece specifically.
Yeah.
Well, I just wanted, before you jump to the next slide, so did we just award a contract for signal repair? So how has that affected with all this?
So we have, we have a signal repair contract in addition to, if there's two people on the team that do, that do signal repair. But they're, they're out, they're out doing that frequently and they're often out there with the signal repair companies, my understanding. So the other change in the structure is the, having a community development, office of community development, which is actually what it is in the Home Rule Charter. That, under which you have economic community development, code enforcement and city planning. We think that moving back to that as it actually originally is in the it is in the Home Rule Charter, makes a lot of sense, especially when we think about projects like our blight, 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 flight, blight, flight, fight demolitions, there are a lot of things that overlap with, with code enforcement, city planning and economic development. Additionally, moving city, actually I'll go down to the next slide. Sorry, we'll just skip, skip ahead a little bit. So you'll see you have a director of community development, under which you have community development, economic development, code enforcement and city planning. Currently, city planning sits underneath code enforcement, which to me, city planning is kind of underutilized right now, it's, it's kind of only zoning. And we have some, you know, real talent there with, with Don King and we need to be lifting that up. And what we do want to do is add an assistant planner so that we have not only more capabilities there, we're not just a zoning office, we're actually planning. But the, you know, planning can go hand in hand with the economic development, the community development. There's grants out there for city planning, there's grants out there for connectivity and increasing walkability. Those types of things are wonderful, but right now, it's, it's been a kind of a, a patchwork of grants without a real plan. We think the structure in addition to the strategic planning and the, the leadership of Eileen Satriani, that we can really make some strides for our, our long-term planning to.
Sorry, go ahead, I thought you were done.
And to Councilperson Schuster's question, the grant writer Maggie Perry is fabulous, she currently sits in the police department. But we would like to move her to the community development office. She works most closely with, with Eileen at this point, so to have her sit there and have certainly still focus a lot on police, but be having a global view of, of what's out there for the city. And that's where, in an ideal world, which we are not in currently, we would love to be able to hire a second grant writer so that we're really, you know, we have, as you guys know, we have, we have a really big structure and a really big mandate here with what we do in the city. It'd be great to get, to get Maggie some help in that area, we don't think it's realistic in that first half of the year. You know, we're, we'll propose that we fund a second grant writer in the, the second half of the year.
So then all, sorry. I was just going to ask really quick if, um, under the umbrella, bringing all of this under the umbrella of OECD. Are any of the, are any of these new positions or any of the previous positions now that are under this umbrella, are they being paid by federal? Like the zoning officer, the city planner, like which positions, I'm sure we'll see it when we get the full budget tomorrow, but which positions are out of, out of, under this umbrella are being paid through federal funds? Does that make any difference, in other words?
Yeah, so we are, we are being very conservative at the moment and we have been in touch, obviously with DCD, DCD on these, on these subjects. And so what we'll have is, obviously the director is primarily paid through her money. And, but we will pay a portion of that and it's just, it's a small portion, and it's like, it's like about seventeen percent. And then also for the grant, the grant writer moving in, we would, we would be paying, this is Maggie Perry, we will, we will be moving, as she moves into here, she will be working on some grants that are relevant to her. But again, we will be paying the majority of her salary. And so for, for the lips departments, the old lips departments, and what will that, we will continue to pay that from the general fund. But then the, the other groups that came across with OECD, with OECD will continue to be paid by her.
And why would we now start paying fifteen percent of the salary of the OECD director? Is that because we're bringing all these other positions under that umbrella?
That is correct. And, and what we're seeing already. That is correct. And, and what we're seeing already is, we've really started to work very much in this manner already from the grant perspective, so. What we're seeing is we've now really corralled all of the grant writing into kind of one area, so we've got a full view. Of all the different types of grants that the city is interested in. So we've been, so we've called in as well, Police Departments, we've called in the Fire Department as well as all the other. You know, types of grants that the city is interested in. So it gives us a full picture. And that's why, yeah, the director right now is, will be overseeing that full picture of grants. So a portion of that, you know, we will be paying.
So is, is that seventy five fifteen split? Is that a recommendation from HUD? Like they said, this is what we'd like you to, to do, or did you guys come up with that?
Yeah, there's actually a maximum that HUD will pay, so we've, and because on the. Something the mayor talked about earlier, which was getting the, the salaries kind of at the same level. So what we've done is that the, the city will pay that additional amount. So above what we'll, we'll pay.
So is that because, I'm just trying to get this straight, so it, it's seventy five fifteen because you've increased the salary above, you've. Given the position a raise above what they will fund?
That is correct, yes.
What's, what is the top amount salary that they will fund? Do you know offhand?
I think sixty four, I think, off the top of my head, but I've got that number.
That's a, that's one of the positions we're proposing at seventy five.
So I have a quick question, so. We haven't done this before. The city has, hasn't in the past subsidized salaries above OECD. So is that what we're doing? We're subsidizing because of parity? Looking for parity?
Yes, so for the, for the director who will now be managing the previous subsidy was the Lips Departments, right? Which is now code enforcement. So for the additional responsibilities.
And how about the people that fall under? Are, are any of these union positions that are moving from the city over to here or? I'm just trying to wrap my head around this, because I know there's separate entities, but now they're kind of be like, we're kind of like subsidizing it.
And I don't want to, I, it's, I don't want to get too far into the OECD. There are very, there are not very many positions that will have significant or any OECD or HUD funding. Eileen is working with HUD, with DCD on this. I don't, to my knowledge, I don't think any of the code enforcement. Union positions, for example, would have HUD funding. This is, the crux of most of this is that we're, we're trying to, to get ourselves into a structure where. We're not overlapping work and where our systems are really working together so that we can. Get a quicker response from a code enforcement process to a demolition, for example. We're, we're trying, we're, we're looking at this from a more of a process perspective. We think that any savings that we might realize in being able to utilize HUD funding is a, is a nice to have and a benefit. But that's certainly not, not the reason for any of these changes and it's not a, it wouldn't be a significant. It wouldn't be a significant amount, so.
Now, explain that one with the fifteen percent with the OECD Director. Did you say that we could only go up to sixty four? What was, what was that?
I'll have to take the number, but I think it was, there was a limit that, that HUD, you know, pays for that position. So in order to bring the parity with the structure that we're putting in place, then we will pay the additional.
As, as we should, because she, as we should, because that director would be managing not just economic community development, but. City planning and code enforcement.
And do you have to get, just. Thinking about this from the HUD perspective, do you have to get approval from HUD in order to roll all this under? The, the OECD umbrella, or can you just do that as a function of being the mayor?
It's in the, this is how it's actually structured in the Home Rule Charter. So we've actually been out of compliance with the Home Rule Charter with Lips separate from. From community development. Which no one has, seemed to care about, which is, I don't think, I don't think anybody's watching.
I, I know over the years, it's been like the city planner was paid out of OECD years ago and then went back into Lips and then, so yeah, there, there, there's been changes. I was just, okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
But no, I think it's a good point now. We should, it's something we'll definitely look into. That's. Yeah, I don't have a, you know, comprehensive answer on that.
One other question I have on that point, are we gonna, would we have to amend our action plan? Our current action plan to not come, you know, to not become not in compliance with that action plan by doing, by making these changes? Because I believe the action plan is what, is what, is what HUD, we approve it and it's what HUD approves then as their, you know, the salary. Levels that are in that action plan.
Forty seven. Yeah, oh, the HUD action plan.
I, I, I will, we'll check on that. I don't. I don't, I would be very disheartened about our government operations if HUD didn't want us to manage better, but. But we'll certainly, we'll certainly check, check on that. And you'll see additionally that, so I've split out community development and economic development. Economic development, again, this is not something that we get to do this year or even maybe even next year. A city of our size really, you know, really should have a more robust economic development team. You know, we know Scranton tomorrow is incredible work and we're so grateful for them. We know years ago Scranton tomorrow was created because. The economic development in the city wasn't sufficient for, for what, what we needed. And I'd love to see over time, again, not, not next year, that's not realistic, maybe not even twenty twenty two. Over time, I'd like to see some of those, those functions come, come into the city structure. I think that's the type of, those are the type of exciting forward looking jobs that, that talented people want. And I think that building that up over the coming years could be really helpful to the city and, and help us get some. Get some, some energetic people. Here working with us.
Now, now that piece right there, do we have someone in that position right now? I see that it says not funded until twenty twenty one. Is, is that, that'll be a new one, because of this year, it does, it's not starred in the.
Right, those are, those are positions that I'm, again, putting, putting forward to you in the public because I want to show what. Well, because selfishly, I've been working really hard for the last eleven months, so this is my analysis of what needs to happen. And to, to set the stage for, for next, you know, let's say in next year, let's say in twenty twenty three. Maybe it's not till twenty twenty three, maybe we, we still are having a rough go in terms of finances next in twenty twenty two. I'd love to be able to go back to this document and say, you know, from the start. We needed, we thought it would be great to have in-house marketing to help us push out work from here and push out. All the Scranton properties that, that people could develop and as you all know. As much as we appreciate all of our economic development partners, not everyone's as focused on the city of Scranton as those of us on this call. So I think it'd be, you know, really great to have, have, have more of the stuff that's in-house where we can partner with others, of course. But really have some more capabilities in-house.
So when I'm, when I'm looking at that department though, I only see what the Assistant Planner as being a new position, but there's actually about. Five of them in there with the writer sliding over.
Right, they're not, they're not funded. They won't be in the budget, so that. So I, we can, we can go back and start those, but you won't. You won't see, there's no budget impact there. You won't see those.
Okay, now the one that is starred will be in the budget?
The Assistant Planner, yes. So we'll, we'll go back up to, to the VA Office. There are no, really no big changes structurally. It's more additional support for these essential functions, so the.
Start the project manager? Yeah, so.
I can have the VA himself.
So, so yeah, project, project management, I think, so we, we talked about again in October when we went through the capital budget. We, something that the city desperately needs, we need the capability and the expertise. To follow through from, really from RFP all the way through to conclusion of projects. I really anticipate that this, this position will pay for itself in the first year. I think just in terms of the management of projects and get through, through the, through time, we're just getting things completed. And also obviously going into next year, as I explained, we've got probably the biggest projects that maybe the city's seen will be the new operating platform, so. Again, the extra, extra bandwidth here is going to be very important. The other positions that we've added, we've beefed up is in information technology. And obviously, we've been very, we've been struggling a lot, I think, for quite a few years here in terms of getting the, the technology, you know, robust. Users being supported and certainly with the enhancements that I think that everybody's looking for on top of the. The new platform next year, we need to have more of a kind of a modern structure. So what we've included here is, we have a. Public safety tech support, so probably fifty, sixty percent of the upgrades of. Software installations of equipment, training, you know, but basically PD have mobile offices today. As well as all of the, you know, the camera systems and the, the storage of information. So this is really is a very specialist role, so we, we want to fund that role so that we can properly support public health. The, the second one is the network administrator. And again, this really came home to us this year, obviously with the cyber attack. And what we need is a position where we have someone who's constantly reviewing and monitoring the upgrades of the software. That, that happened on a frequent basis. Also, any troubleshooting, any connections that need to be, need to be, need to be changed with our, with our partners. But also as a, as a help desk as well. And certainly, you know, my kind of six months here, we've had a lot, it's very. It's very time consuming when you don't have. An IT, an IT system that kind of is robust and works correctly. So I think as we are going to invest in a new platform, it's very important that we maximize the use of that asset. So we've, so I've got two new positions there in the, in the IT, in the IT group. And then one more in HR is we have a confidential, confidential administration assistant, administration assistant. So again, this is very important for, for the HR, HR group. The, the team that's already in there are pretty full load, fully loaded and with. Just that, with the way, in terms of managing the day to day. Changes in, in policies, procedures, obviously with the. The, the, the union contracts coming up as well in the next couple of years. You know, there's a lot of work going to be going on here. We need a confidential assistant here for, for the director. But they're the main ones and.
Carl, I, I have a question on the, the public health coordinator. So. Yeah, that's under HR and I see in the narrative here, I just read really quick that. You're anticipating that this position will be funded through partnership with academic healthcare nonprofit organizations in two thousand twenty one and perhaps beyond. I don't think I'd be comfortable putting that in unless you had a guarantee from these people, the. Partnership that yes, they are going to fully fund it and, you know, I think we would need to know, well, I can't speak for everyone, but I would want to know. You know, who, who are those, what do those partnerships look like and where's the money coming from before, you know, we, we actually. Officially put that into, into the budget.
So right, so right now.
And the other thing too, I, just to add on to that. If, if this is because of the, and I, I understand what, you know, the, the reasoning behind it. But it was my understanding that the emergency management coordinator, who is Al Lucas at this point. Is kind of running the front on the pandemic part of things, so I know this is more than that, but. You know, if you could dive into that a little further.
Sure, so in the budget, there's no dollars allocated to it. It's not a position that, that our revenues are going toward. It's in the, it's in the budget, but it said, it, it literally said not, like it says like funded by private dollars. So as, you know, as you guys know from, you know, you've changed the administrative code, so. I would have to come to you, well, A, I would come to you with any donation. I mean, we come to you guys to, when, to announce that somebody has donated something to the city. So if we do, we are able to line up this funding, we would bring that to you all to approve that, essentially that donation. But I wouldn't, as you guys know, I, I wouldn't be able to move, if your concern is like moving salary. Or something, I mean, I couldn't do that without your approval.
No, 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 my, I, I get it now. My, my, I, because I couldn't see the, you know, the detailed line items. I wasn't sure what it looked like, but. My concern would have been that we put a salary in there and then, and hoped. That the partnership came through, but I understand what you're, what you're saying now.
And you'll, and you'll see it and I, again, I. Yeah, you'll, you'll see it. That one is not, that doesn't have dollars attached to it. And did you, it's been a treasury one.
So with that one, this is the one that you're looking to explore, correct?
The, the public health coordinator?
Yes.
Yeah, so we're, we're in conversations with some of our tax exempt organizations about pilot funding. And I think that kind of in lieu of taxes, we will be able to structure that. In terms of the function, so yes, Al Lucas continues to do an incredible job. Running, running point on COVID. Al Lucas is not a public health official or yet trained medical expert of any sort. So he needs to continue to focus on emergency planning and I, I, he, I think. For the rest of the pandemic, if he's still willing to do this, he's doing this at no compensation for all of this time. It'd be great if he continued to run point on a lot of these things, but if we could get a public health coordinator in there who's actually. Able to speak the language of the epidemic, the epidemiologist, the, the CMOs that we speak with at the hospitals, the Department of Health. We really need somebody in there with a different skill set, a different knowledge set, and that's not just for COVID. This is as we go into the future, you, you know, you guys have, still have it tabled. And, you know, we'll, we'll see what it looks like to explore a local health department. With, and as I've always said, whether it's with the city or the county, I just really think that we're missing a local health department to help. With preventative medicine, with education. We're partnering with the Right Center, Friday, actually, sorry, Saturday. Saturday from ten to four at the Right Center, you can get catch up vaccines. The city is partnering with the Right Center on that. There's so much public health that we could do. I think we can start small with a public health coordinator. We don't need a full Department of Health. And maybe we don't ever have one, maybe it's a county level thing and that's, that's fine. We'll do whatever is best for, for everyone in the city and the area. But we really do need somebody who can help us with these things. I, you know, my vision, and this was before. COVID hit was to, to do something with public health where we could do anti-smoking campaigns, you know, diabetes, education. All sorts of things that actually also overlap with public safety, like seat belts, bike helmets, all of those types of things, you know, there's no one on the team. Into the police department or anywhere in the city that can focus on this type of stuff. I think a public health coordinator could really help us. With some really proactive things and we're not looking for a full medical doctor necessarily, but we're trying to get somebody in there. And again, I, that's something we can get funded. I'm, I'm confident this year at least.
So what is in the budget is that there's money to explore this, isn't there?
The only, the, there's no public health money in the budget. You guys haven't approved the exploration, so. The only, there's no, the only bud, the only line item in the budget is a public health coordinator. But there's no dollars attached to it because I'll go get funding from our partners.
All right, and then Kevin, there, there is a legal piece to this, correct?
Yeah, the, Mayor, my issue with that is that. We sent the, the proposed ordinance back because the citation in the ordinance was to. The, the state law that enabled counties to create departments of health, not municipalities, unless the municipalities had an existing. Department of Health at the time that this, the state statute was passed. Nobody, I don't know that anyone ever got back to council on, on that issue. Because I, I, I don't think anybody on the council has an issue with per se. Uh because I, I, I don't think anybody on the council has an issue with per se of a Department of Health. Uh the issue was, we just didn't want to make a site, a reference to a state law, a state enabling law that wasn't applicable to us. So that was the issue.
Okay, well, Joe, I mean, Joe Price responded that he was fine with that change. I thought when council tabled something, it was on council to bring that back up.
Yeah, but I, no, but if I could revive, yeah, I. I didn't, we never made a proposed change. We just said this isn't the, we don't think this is the correct statute that you're relying upon. So if there's a new ordinance that comes down. We'll, we'll, you know, we'll, we'll review it, but nothing else, nothing more came down.
Okay. Yeah, so this, yeah, this, and that's this, um. This uh position, you know, again, we're, it's for. It's purposely within human resources. It's, it's a, you know, how human resources runs, you know, point on healthcare. So it's embedded in there. It's purposely not set out as its own department cuz there's so many steps that that we would need to take to build that out. Yeah, uh Mr. Hayes, thank you all.
Yeah, I can, I'll follow up with Joe on, on the issue.
Okay, thank you.
I'll shoot him an email right now.
Thank you. Okay. Uh and then on the, I was just grabbing my list for you all. Um in terms of the, the salaries that you'll see tomorrow. Yeah, yeah. And I, I noticed in the, in our graphics that these are actually twenty nineteen numbers, but they're, the story is, the story is still the same. Um so, you know, we're, our, our salaries are low compared to peer municipalities. Um and we, 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 we need to get them up. We need to, we need to be able to recruit people. What we're, we're proposing for, um so like I said, Carl's got going from ninety five to seventy five. Um the BA position is extraordinarily important and really should be um as you, as you can see, you know, higher than ninety five. But um I think it's important that we have a, a consistent message about what it means to be senior management in the city of Scranton. No one here is uh, you know, building a, a new beach house um after during their time here. Um we're, you know, grateful, grateful for the, the salaries that we have, but we've, we've gotta get, we've gotta get some, some more professional level salaries here. So what we will be proposing is, you know, that the mayor's at seventy five, the VA is coming down to seventy five. The solicitor and the finance manager um already make seventy five. So we landed on seventy five as, as kind of that baseline for senior level. Uh so we're proposing that the chief of staff position come in at seventy five, that the treasurer and the community development. Director go up to seventy five. Um the treasurer job should be a CPA. Um similar to, you know, solicitor jobs, that's a require, it's a, a skill and a certification that um. Seventy five is not a lot of money to be able to get, but that at least, you know, that's a, that's a respectable, a respectable level in the city of Scranton. The IT director and the engineer and DPW were proposing at seventy thousand. So again, um those, those types of jobs, uh you know, in the, in the private market pay much more, but we. Um and you can see on this slide, you know, and it is more at like a hundred and nine for in other cities. Um but we think that putting in these tiers and helping them have more parity across, across the structure makes sense. I also really believe that what, what we're trying to do is not play favorites. We're trying to put salaries in place. That would live on and would, would grow over time, but would live on past this. Um, you know, I think I, we know each other well enough. I, we're not trying to play favorites. We're not playing politics with this stuff. We're just trying to set up an organization that makes sense for people and that um when we hand over the keys. Down the line that the next person here would inherit a structure that where they can recruit uh and retain talent.
Does that, I should, does that make sense to everybody? I. Am I allowed to ask questions?
Can you ask a question, Carl? Sure.
Am I allowed to ask questions? So, yeah, cuz this is really important, right? I think it's something that, as I say, open this. When we open up, you know, the, the meeting today, we, we really struggle to hire. And, and I'm really, I am really concerned that we're actually gonna lose people. And that, we're, we're already very, very lean. We're already, there's a lot of people doing, they're doing literally. Days a week, right? So we, this, this to me is a huge issue. So I, I really would like to get kind of council feedback on it.
Well, I just me personally, I mean, I, I, you know, I think it makes sense, definitely. I just, I, I need to look at this thing. Um, you know, I, I, I go through the budget line item by line item, um which I will do when I, when I, when we get the, the full budget. Um but yeah, I think it does, it does make sense um uh in terms of, um you know. Paying people uh for the job that they do. Now, I know there was a salary study that was done. There was a discussion on like a merit based uh increase, uh you know, type program. Was that ever considered?
These, these numbers are actually, we, we expanded upon the salary study that, that Dave Bolzoni pulled together last year.
Okay.
So these, these two um slides that you see, and again, I, you know, they, it actually has the twenty nineteen budget in there. For those salaries, but they're, we can adjust those, but those are, they're basically the same.
But I think you, you, I, I agree totally with the, the, the whole merit based speed, right? He's, is something, I think, when, as we build these out. Um, you know, you should have uh, Council of Rothschild mentioned, it was like roles and responsibilities first of all. And then the skills that you need and the experience to do that job. And then any commensurate qualification that goes with it. So I think you're right, that, that ideally. Um it would, it'd be good to have like a merit based pay. You'd have maybe even a progression. Yeah, so people can come in and actually there's a, there's a ban, right? So maybe, you know, depending on experience, you come in at sixty five and. It tops out at a hundred, right? But the point is, it's based on, you know, on merits and, and of course, that's. It's a great motivator for people. And again, it's, I think we, we need to change the narrative, I think, for people here is, it, it's that local government is a career path. Rather than just a, a stepping stone, right? So, yeah, I think, to me, this is huge. I mean, because just in my experience coming in. You know, you get zero handover and, you know, the picking, picking things up for somebody coming in is extremely hard. You need the continuity. And I think you need, you need to build that bench strength, right? So ideally, you have, you know, progression from within. So you've got that redundancy when people move on, retire or whatever. And that's very hard, I think, in local government with the way it's structured.
I have a question, so um. We're coming from in the parity piece, but you know, uh as a resident, and I'm sure residents are gonna think the same thing. Okay, so these are, some of these are large increases. Let's not, let's not mistake. Almost thirty grand. So why, since we're talking about, you know, phasing everything else in, why couldn't these increases be phased in over. Maybe one, two, three years where it might be better received by, by the public? And to see where we're at, like you said, mid, you know, well, mid, mid year, we wanna take a look at things. Um but. You know, that doesn't mean that there's a surplus cuz none of the grant money that we possibly will get is in the budget. So that's where we might see a surplus. Right? So that doesn't mean it increases us, we can spend it. But, but I'm just saying the salaries itself, you know, and some of these are large increases and, 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 you know, I have a problem with some of that. Because it's, it's a large increase. I'd, I'd be more accepting of it if it was phased in, say, you know, like, like other places. Instead of just boom, all in one year.
Yeah, I.
That's just my, my position on this.
That's a good point.
And I, I hear you and I, I think that's, that's why we wanted to, to, and we've been working with Councilperson Gahan. To, to set up a series of these conversations so that we're having, we're having these dialogues. Um my, my, you know, my first response to that is just to say. Again, this, these aren't increases for individual people. These are, again, I'm sitting next to somebody who's taking a twenty thousand dollar pay cut. Um. These are about setting the, setting the salaries where they should be, of course, a position where we want to recruit or retain a CPA. Um, somebody that's, you know, would be managing a, a, a large structure in a community development, for example. Um, we're trying to, we're trying to, to set the organization where it should be agnostic to who's sitting in the mayor's seat. Who's on city council, who's sitting in the BA's seat. Um, what, with the budget that we have, you kind of look and you think. And let's, you know, let's be honest, that there's, there's some positions and some things that we know politics were a part and this wasn't just like, you know, this. You don't want that to be the case, right? You want a structure to be based on what this, the organization needs and what the qualifications. Of the, the position are. And uh we're, we're trying to get to that, but this is, this is why we're having this dialogue and I think this is a good start.
Yeah, I'd like to add, I, I agree that they are large increases. And so I was surprised when I had seen that. And I know um last time we spoke, I uh was asking about the salary comparisons and seeing them. I mean, we're really far behind a lot of cities that are of a similar size or even smaller size than our city. Um and so I think it, you know, it sounds like with, even with those significant increases, we're still. Not anywhere close to what those other, um some of those other cities are paying. Um, for like those director positions. Um so I mean, that does help me to understand it a little bit more. Um I think it is still a large amount to, to swallow. Um. So, uh, yeah, I probably just need some time to digest that a bit more.
So when we're getting these salaries tomorrow, are we gonna get some job descriptions to go along with all of these new positions as well?
Yeah, we, you know, get an outline. I think you, you're getting out, with some of them, we have the full descriptions, but some of you have an outline and um. It's, you're right, it's, it's market driven, right? That, that's, that's the way it is. And uh in every industry, it's always a bit of a shocker, right? When you, when you're looking to recruit an engineer or, you know, a professional and you find out that, you know, you've got to add thirty thousand dollars to the salary. But that's the thing, it's the market, it's market driven. That's um, well, that's the economy, right? That's our economy. It's a market economy. So. We signed up for it. And, you know, you, you, you've got to move with it. And if we, again, start to go back to what we, the big picture here is, if we wanna get out of where we're at, right? If we just get it, get into like just survival mode, we've really got to make change. We need to start making changes. We need to start doing things differently. And to do that, you know, we need to get the, you know, the talents into doing it as well. We need, we need, we need that support.
And Carl, I, I, the, the one thing that I've always said, I think over the years is. Um to look at this in, in terms of where we are financially overall. Um like what's our bottom line? Do we have a deficit? Are we looking at a tax increase? So I mean, you know, I, I think you, you're making a, you, both are making a good argument, but now let's marry that up to. You know, what, what the end of the year is gonna look like? Do we have a tax increase? Um.
Yep.
You know, and, and those specifics, I think.
Yep.
And we can, yeah, we can certainly get into that. I think, and as we do, I, I would. I would keep it, I would keep in mind the, well, I, I, we've been making the argument for an hour and a half, but just the structure of this matters. The fact that, you know, you guys are sitting here talking to the, the two people putting this together. I will literally, I was making the copies to send to your houses early today. Um and my team was, was trying to get them to. We, we need help to, to run the city. I think we're doing a, a good job, but we, we really need. To have more courses in the stable. Um and we have those. Um and we have, we've been able to recruit, I don't know even how, with the salaries we have, we've been able to recruit some really amazing people. Uh but we need to be able to continue to do that. And um I know people hear the word raises and they think, oh my God, oh my God. Uh but that's why we're, you know, so deliberate about walking you through this, you know, we'll be, um, you know. I'm sure we'll be on the phone with, with Jim after this, walking him through it, uh the salary surveys, you know, really just, just showing, showing that. And then again, you know, having most, so many of us on this call, having been on the school board, um and I, it's a good thing that they should get, get paid well up there. But you know, we know that the public works director at the school board gets, a school district gets like almost double what, what we, that person here does. Um the business administrator, as he should, he does yeoman's work, should get paid much more than he does, but that's still more than, than here. So even just up the street, you know, it's, it's tough for us to recruit talent even within our own city.
And I think when thinking about those job descriptions, I think that helps because um, you know what I mean? Even, even in other areas of employment, if you're gonna create a new position, um you definitely have to get a job description in. And you have to get that justification as to, this is what this person's gonna be doing. These are the aspects of the job. This is what we expect from them. And also, when you were talking about merit pay, so this, that would go into evaluations from supervisors too.
Yes.
Absolutely.
And that we are, oh, you know, there's, there's a, there are bargaining agreement negotiations happening. Basically from now until the end of next year, um evaluations are, are something that we believe would be really helpful. That confidential assistant position in HR would be a person, um that would be in their job description, for example, that would be a. Um a task that, that they would be helping with. So I, yeah, we're, we're, I think, I think we can get there. I, I think so. Um, yeah, we can, well, any, any questions you guys have or we can turn to the.
I have a quick question, so.
Hang on one second. So, so I think like, I mean, I'm here, I, I think I'm hearing it from, from Bill, I'm hearing it from Jess, I'm hearing it from Mark. I think job descriptions would go a long way to getting our buy in on.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we just, I just, I know we won't have them tomorrow.
Key ones, cuz I think you're right, the, one of the big things, this is what, one of the things that really surprised me when I came to the city was. Um, you, you, you didn't actually need any qualifications. This is kind of quite worrying, right? It's kind of, so that's the thing is, you know, we, we need people, I think, that are. Qualified to do the job and have, you know, the necessary experience, right? So, so, yeah, I think it's something we, we desperately need to do. And obviously, we, we are doing that, the mayor is doing that. Um but I think we just need to uh kind of formalize it now.
Okay, so I have a quick question. So, you know, we talked about moving employees, we talked about creating new positions, we talked about giving increases for parity. Um, some of this is cuz of the savings of the furloughs, I, I think I heard. So what about the furlough of employees? How do they fit into this coming into next year? Are we, are all them back? Or I mean, I, I didn't get an update, so.
Uh, the majority are back now. Yeah, and I believe, I think this maybe, I think it's three people that are still on furlough. But I'll confirm that.
But it's a, it's a, a very, uh, not, I'm, that's a diminished, just in terms of numbers. If, if three or some, it's a, it's a, the small number that are still on furlough.
I'll follow up and get you the, I'll get you the, the information.
Yeah, so we're, we're back, we're back nearly to a hundred percent um at this point.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, we've been basically.
Good question, Mark.
Yeah, cuz we've been running on demand, basically. So as the, as the demands increase, we've been bringing people back, you know, for the services. So, yes, so basically, yeah, the funding approach, um. So, as you said, we, straight out the gate, we don't believe twenty twenty one is the year to increase taxes or debt, right? This is the, so we're going into a recovery year and I think increasing taxes is just gonna overburden. Um residents, uh you know, obviously it could be more damaging long term, right? I think people that may be struggling today. Um are gonna struggle more next year. And again, because of the uncertainty, I think in terms of the economy and, and obviously the continuation of COVID. Um, we don't believe it's um, it, it's really, it, it would benefit anybody. I think increasing taxes probably, we, we'll just struggle with maybe increased delinquencies. So that's kind of the, the headline. Um, that's, that's the headline, Jim. We're not increasing taxes, right? We're not increasing taxes. So. Uh. So basically, say, kind of, the revenue streams remain pretty much the same. Um payroll prep, which everybody knows is on, was on the twenty twenty budget. And uh obviously was not implemented. It's currently under review. And, you know, we, and also we've got the extended, extension now with the, the tax, tax committee as well, so to look generally at tax structures. Going into twenty twenty two. So uh with, the payroll tax still may, still may happen, you know, we're still working on that, but. It's, that is not in the current budget projection. The, um, say, obviously twenty twenty two, I think is where we're gonna need to start to determine like what the right tax structure, structure is for the city. And the other thing is, is we're focusing on higher collection rates, right, for those existing taxes. And we've already started to do that, you know, we've, we've put some um, put some structures in place. Uh, I think you, council signed off just recently, um a third party to collect the Lincoln refuse. Uh, we're working hard now to get, also legislation will be up, I think, in front of council next week to put the. Uh refuse tax onto the real estate tax, which again will increase revenues, uh the collection rates. So we're doing whatever we can right now to uh basically to have a better collection. So we're doing whatever we can right now to, uh, basically to have a better collection rate of current taxes as well. So that's a big drive for us going into next year. So this is probably the big, the big point of discussion, right, is the, uh, with the shortfall in revenue that we're, we're estimating, which against the budget, which is going to be around five million. We. What we're looking at is taking the workers' comp. Fund that we got from the, yeah, the Department of Labor Industry, the six million is holding that five million. In the budget line as contingency. So that's the big, that I think that's the big question. I think it probably will be the discussion important to most people. The remaining balance of the one we will get will go into the O P E B trust fund. And if it's not required. Then obviously based on the actual receipts, we will also put the, put that back into, or put it into an O P E B trust. The.
Carl, what? It says at the bottom there, you know, I, I have concerns about that. Um, but at the bottom, it says other revenues that may decrease. Or eliminate the need for the five million dollar contingency include, and then there's a list, but.
Sorry, yeah. So this, and this, this is what we're trying to do, right? I think to, uh, but yeah, these, these are not, um. Again, they're uncertain, right? So this, this is one of the reasons I'd like to do that mid-year review and obviously we'll track as we go through the year. And the idea is, is not to use, right, that five million. At the end of the day, this is, you know, it's a forecast. So depending on, uh, we are looking at debt refinancing, um, we're anticipating, but probably we, we're not talking. A huge amount there. We're probably talking, I think our estimate somewhere between fifty and a hundred thousand that we can get from debt refinancing. The healthcare savings that, um, we talked about, uh, council on Tuesday. So obviously they are being realized and they are being, they are in the budget from the point of view of. The. The cost of services. But we need to look at other things as well with healthcare, right, in terms of, um, reducing that spend. So of course that, these are contractual. So again, these are things are uncertain at this point. Uh, CARES Act, obviously funding, we're going to continue to, um, to, you know, to provide and allocate for that. Uh, the pilot funding, we have a program right now, which is running to partner, you know, with our nonprofit organizations that are very important to us in the city. Uh, but again, this is uncertain. We, we, we have a certain amount of money in the budget for that. Uh, we're also considering, uh, the manager salary donations at this point. That's, you know, we.
That's my idea. Sorry, Carl.
Yeah, thank you. Right. So, uh, so we're also looking at that. And, I mean, the big thing really is. The revenue expectation through the end of this year, going into that first quarter, um, if it's, if it comes in better than expected. And, and that's the real driver. Cause at the moment, you know, in two thousand nineteen, we ended, we had, uh, which was a good year. We had like ninety million dollars in revenue. And, and obviously this year, you know, we've still got a lot of work to do, um, you know, before, you know, we get close to that. So. Or until we get close to the budget. So in terms of that contingency, do we go into next year and say. You know, we expect the revenues, uh, the, the standard revenue lines to, you know, to, uh, maintain them and expect, like, expect them to recover. Um, or do we, again, this is, this is the, the stance we're taking is, or do we take the more conservative approach? And have that backup of contingency that if we do have problems, that we do have that cash flow. To continue obviously running services and to build and to rebuild the things that we want to build through next year.
Well, my concern there is two things. When, when this was first, the city was, uh, negotiated with the Department of Labor and Industry.
Yep.
It was, you know, the, the whole intent of unlocking this money was to obviously put that, the, the six million dollars in the O P E B. Uh, trust fund to assist with the future cost of retiree benefits. And it was recommended by, um, our auditor. So my concern is that. You know, just like with some other things the city has done in the past, um, like the golf course, you know, we, we have, and I know you're. You, the thought is to put it in, into a contingency. My fear is though that you blow through that, you never get it back and it goes into that black hole. Whereas the thought was in the beginning that this would make a, a difference in lowering the, uh, the total cost for the city. Um, in terms of employee benefits. So I just, I have an issue. I think I, you know, and, and looking at this overall. It, it, that's, it concerns me, um, that we would do that. And there's just, um. You know, I, I want to go through the revenue line items, uh, in more detail, obviously, but, um, you know, I, I just, uh. I would be concerned if we blew through that, um, even though I understand, you know, why you're proposing it. This is very concerning to me. And, and actually the question I would have is, and I don't know if you can answer it. Back when this all occurred, I, I, I believe that our, uh, the financial community looked favorably upon it, like our bondholders. So if we put that in, into a contingency and had to use it. Would that hurt our, our bond rating? Would that hurt our overall, the, the way that the financial community looks at us? Because we would have. Used those funds rather than what they were intended for. And I understand there's no, there's no strings attached to this, but that was the original intent. I'm worried about using that, those, those funds.
Yeah, that, that's the big question. Um, I agree. And, and certainly. You know, I, I, I've talked with one of our, you know, financial advisors about this too. And, uh, and also I'm sure Pell have an opinion on it, which, you know, obviously we need, we need to discuss. Uh, but my understanding is that. It's pretty minimus in the sense that from a, from a rating perspective, in the sense that, you know, obviously you're pulling down on, um. You know, on capital rather than you're pulling down on, you know, you, you, you're taking on more debt. Uh, but certainly that, that's something I would, I think I would like to understand. Um. I'd like to understand a bit more on before, I think you're right, before we kind of pull the trigger on this.
Yeah.
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't know if we have, you know, like, I know the budget has to come down to, to council tomorrow, so it's on our agenda. So how much time do we really have? In terms of like deciding whether that, I mean, I, you know, we can always take it out, council can make an amendment, but, um. I, I just, I don't know. It's, it's concerning, I think.
Well, I think it, this is why, again, it's really important that we under, we remember what moment we're in. Um. This is, if, and we can get, you guys can see on your, your revenue sheet. Um, the revenues of the one pager, the delinquent refuse, so, so legal real estate taxes, um, underperformed what was budgeted. Um, in this budget we got by a significant amount. Um, and so we've decreased. We, well, the, the delinquent real estate taxes. Um, it's a, that's a big chunk of funding, but the biggest piece would be. Um, you know, our local tax projections. If it weren't for COVID, we wouldn't be sitting here in this position. Uh, and I, you know, I absolutely hear all of you and I, I don't want to, I want to, I wanted to put the six million dollars. Um, in the O P E B trust right away. I'm glad that COVID hit in March, not say June, because I think we might've done that already. I didn't think once we hit this black swan event of this pandemic and this economic fallout, it was wise. To take unrestricted funds, um, and restrict them in case, you know, the bottom really, really fell, fell out. So we wouldn't be sitting here if not for this event. This is not, I think we've managed very well to what's happening. And if, you know, I, I know we can just sit here and, and talk about what if, but I just, I really think it's important to remember what this year has been like. What other cities and localities are discussing right now in terms of their deficits. Uh, what we're trying to do here is have this, you know, have this conversation, make this proposal to. Do something that would enable us to not burden our taxpayers, many of whom are unemployed right now, many of whom. Are on fixed incomes and are, are really struggling. Also to help us take advantage of a moment where a lot of people are thinking of. Investing in Scranton, coming to Scranton, looking to Scranton. We, we've really got to take advantage of this moment. I think. That tax increase or borrowing is, would, would hurt us more than using, um, unrestricted funds. Uh, we do want to put, you know, I wanted to, I'd love to put all six million dollars in there and, and maybe if revenue surprises to the upside that, that we can put a significant portion into the O P E B trust. We would want to put a million dollars in there and start that. So it's clear that we're very serious about that. Um, and I, I, I don't want to certainly, you know, with savings and, and basic. Financial, you know, personal financial management, the more you save, the better off you are. And that is not lost on us here. Um, we're also talking about a two hundred and ten million dollar obligation. Um. This is something we're going to struggle with for a long time. I don't want us to cut ourselves off at the knees this year and. Stop us from taking up opportunities, um, in twenty twenty-one that, that we could, that we could have.
I have a quick question. So I remember last year, um, and no one likes it. No one wants the tax increase or no one likes one. I know we're all in agreement with that, but I remember last year, and Billy, you, you can help me out here, or Mr. Khan. That, you know, if taxes weren't increased last year, it, we would have to increase some double digits this year. So how, how, how does that line up with last year and this year? I'm having like. And that was a Pell recommendation too. So, I mean, I don't know if Pell's in on this call or where they're at with, with all of this. Cause I know they're still, they're, they're involved, but, but, you know, they make recommendations, but. How does this all line up between last year and this year and, and what their thoughts are?
This would be just, I think we're in a situation, this would be a completely different conversation if we weren't wearing masks in a pandemic and a. An economic downturn to the extent that we're having. Um, where we're, you know, potentially losing businesses and, you know, wage tax revenue. Uh, this isn't, this isn't the, I. This isn't the year that, that anybody thought we would have. So it's hard to draw a line from budget conversations this year through. Uh, I also don't want to pretend that up on, you know, further up on Washington Avenue, there aren't. There isn't a, a big tax cre- increase already coming to the residents of Scranton. So. You know, this.
No, they didn't, they didn't, they didn't get the, you know, they weren't.
No, they didn't get the tax one index rate. So, and that, and you know, and that, that just came up on Monday and, or I think I read that on Monday. Um, so, you know, that's something, maybe that's something to consider. We, you know, we've put this together. We put this together before that, that came out, so.
So, uh, quick question now that I'm thinking about it. So i- in July of, uh, twenty twenty, when, when Pell had presented us with their revised, uh. Projections for the amended exit plan, at that time, we were looking at. Like a three and a half million dollar deficit at the end of twenty twenty. So are we looking at a deficit at the end of this year? And if so, how much, how much is it?
Yeah. So I think we're going to be in the realms of like five.
Five million?
This year. We're going to be.
So what are you projecting to be the deficit at the end of twenty twenty?
Oh, sorry, yeah. Twenty twenty. Yeah, so, not this one. Yeah. Yeah. So for twenty twenty, we're, right now, we're at. I'm going to go. Yeah. So year-to-date revenues, we're just at around ninety million. Uh, we got against the, the hundred and three million, right? So. We're actually, still have like thirty, um, another thirteen million to go through the end of the year. Now, obviously we've got some. Should have a nice, uh, lump from real estates, um, in, um, in November time. And, uh, we have some more. Obviously, we're all at E I Ts now coming to us, obviously because we paid off the town, which is good. Um, but yeah, I think going into the. This is, it's probably going to be somewhere in the realms of, I, I think we, we're still going to be around that, yeah, ninety-eight million, I think by the end of the year. But our expenses are traveling fine. So, so, so I don't, yeah, we're not going to have, I don't think we're going to have a cash flow problem. Going into the year, we're going to be fine because we're, we're tracking well on our expenses.
Okay. But do you have a number that you're projecting? Is there a projected deficit at the end of twenty twenty?
No, I, I think we'll be positive. The way we're going.
So we'll have a cap, so we'll have a.
Yeah, we'll have a position. Yeah, yeah.
Again, with the caveat that this is our first year and if something came up that we don't, aren't anticipating, but.
Yeah, when we, yeah, we look, we look at the cash flow each week and, you know, we're anticipating the, the things that obviously need to, the, the large payments. Um, you know, in terms of salaries, benefits, et cetera. Um, yeah, and, and we're good through to the end of the year.
Okay.
But we, we haven't included, we haven't included like a cash, a positive cash balance as revenue, just. Because we don't, again, we've been, we've tried to be conservative with these revenues and not. Not anticipating.
Now, have those numbers been fluctuating a lot? I know when, uh, we spoke on Monday, you guys were looking at, I mean. Their projections, but you were looking at like nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars. In the hole. I mean, that was what you were projecting there, uh, but are they changing? Often?
For which, Tom?
For the deficit. The deficit that you guys proposed on Monday was looking at about nine hundred dollars.
Oh, that, when we spoke, so when we spoke on Monday, we were proposing, we were at one and a half million of this contingency fund. We've had a rough couple of days where, um, we found a, a. A large grant item that we thought was something that we had, but we do not have. So we had to pull that out. And that's why when we spoke with you all, we were at one and a half million. Let's put, you know, one, one to one point five million. Let's put four point five to five into the O P E B trust. Um, and much to our, um. Disappointment in the last, uh, day or two, uh, that we, we, that grant is, it's potential. Um, but it's, it's not guaranteed. And again, we're. We're doing our best to be very conservative and transparent about what we think we can get. And, and what we need to spend. We don't want to pad a budget. We don't want to bump up revenues to, to. A, a level that we don't think is realistic. And so, and while there are never any guarantees, we just. We, we wouldn't want to do that anyway, but given, you know, given this climate, given that we are in, still in really unknown territory. We're, we're not. We're not here with great, amazing options, right? Like we're not, we're not pretending everything is. Is hunky-dory. So, uh, that's, but that, uh, Councilman Schuster, that would be the, uh, the difference from when we last spoke on Monday that we were. We wouldn't have, we were not anticipating having to use, um, as much of that, uh, potential workers' comp.
Have you done the math on, you know, you, you want to use between five to six million from, from the, uh, Department of Labor and Industry, or from the Workman, Workman's Comp? So have you done the math on, you're, you're saying that, you know, you may not have to use it because you might. Refinance debt and there might be additional healthcare savings and there might be CARES Act funding. And there might be additional pilot funding and I, I'm not sure what manager salary donations of X percentages. And better revenues projected as of November twenty twenty. So have you, like, what does that come out to? I mean, are you saying that that could be a total of? Six million dollars? So you don't have to use that, that funding?
So I sort of could, I've actually built that in so already. So the debt refinancing, we, we put money in for that, which is around, um, which is around eighty thousand dollars. Healthcare savings, which we saw, um, on Tuesday. Um, I haven't put the whole, we have eight hundred thousand in there. Um, I, I baked in around six hundred thousand. Uh, CARES Act funding, we just, we don't know, right? So I've not put anything in there at all. Pilot funding, we have, I think it's half a million, I think we put in.
No.
Oh, sorry. Oh, two hundred thousand. It's in there, about two hundred thousand. And yeah, then, because they're really, they're, they're relatively small, right, in relationship to the, um, to the gap that we have.
Right. The, the, um, so the biggest one, so manager salaries would be, um, essentially proposing, uh. You know, I've been donating back five percent of my salary and I'll continue to do so. Um, I consider asking the managers on that, that top tier that we discussed. Um, potentially donating back a percentage of, of their salary. Uh, but that would depend on, um, you know, the budget process. Um, how that goes. The, the, the biggest item on here would be, you know, obviously better revenues than projected. We, we're. We think that there's, you know, we're projecting, uh, wage taxes to go down, you know, nearly four million dollars. If that. If that doesn't happen, then fantastic. Um, that we would have, you know, more revenues coming in like from that. I would, and what I'll say, and this has been a rough, a rough couple of days, um, since we pulled that, that grant out of the. since we pulled that, that grant out of the, the revenue line in our draft, that we could get to, not a mil, well, with better projected revenues, we think that these things on the screen now could have, could have add, could add up to a million and a half, but they certainly don't, again, unless, unless wage taxes boom like crazy, that's not going to add up to the $5 million that we put in for the contingency.
So it's safe to say that if this does, if it is, it goes through that you're going to use whatever, five and a half or $5 million, that most likely you're going to end up using that next year? Is that a safe assessment?
I hope not, I wouldn't, I would really hope that we wouldn't have to use all of it. And I was really hope, if we could keep it at 1.5, we were really thinking it'd be possible to not-
You're looking at it as a percentage, yeah, percentage of the overall budget, that's the key thing. And, you know, it, you know, 5% either way, right, is going to make a difference.
In the, in the pilot funding, you have at $300,000 this year, I think? And that's an increase from 50,000. So is there a nonprofit that made an agreement to donate an additional 50,000? Because I know usually we do get a guaranteed 250,000.
One, one entity is at 200,000. And then we, I actually, this is why we're doing this, I actually thought that was going to sit at 200,000, so. 200,000 is the one that we have a, well, we have a couple smaller commitments, but 200,000 is the main one.
So what was the grant that was pulled in the last few days?
So it was a grant that came through, it was a FEMA, FEMA grants, safer grants that we were anticipating for, for next year, but it's, it's probably not, well, if, if it comes through, the money would not be available till 2022.
Okay. Now, when I'm looking at, so I mean, I, I think Councilman Gahan kind of went through that list right there and he worked his way down that list. When we're talking about healthcare savings, the other night, we, we were giving some healthcare savings. And then when I'm taking a look at the, the one document that was sent tonight, it looks like we have about, an increase of about 352,000 in healthcare across, let me see, across the police, the fire, clerical, non-union, all of those positions. Now, can you explain the, the healthcare savings compared to those healthcare increases?
Yeah, so the healthcare, it's, it's based on a the cost of the actual healthcare in, in terms of when somebody goes to, you know, goes to, goes to a clinic. Those, those costs are indexed, right? So that index is, is put in there, it's around, I think it's around half a percent. But then we've taken out, just the, the only cost that we've taken out are the administration costs, right, that we talked about on, on Tuesday. Right, so the actual, the, the cost of the service, obviously being self-funded, is that, you know, we, they, they will go up. So the money that we've taken out for administration has just reduced that.
Yeah, so I, I know a lot of that savings was that admin cost, but we also got better prices on coverage, didn't we? In that as well? I thought that was one of the takeaways from the other.
No, absolutely, yeah. So we, I think, I think the numbers around seven, seven and a half percent would have, would have been the increase. That's now being reduced based on, based on the new rates. But we're still, it's still, will be an increase. But yeah.
So we were tracking here, now we're tracking here, but still, still going up.
Okay, and then moving down there, we're talking, you know, those, those manager salary donations in there. Do, do we think, you know, we're, we're also talking about some, some increases for some other physicians? Do we think it's more stable to say per se, don't do those increases rather than pulling salaries down?
The, 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 the salary donation, we were talking about like 3%, something, something like that. So I've been doing 5% since June. I think, you know, I potentially would be asking people making, you know, over 70,000 probably to take the 3% increase, it wouldn't be, you know, underneath that amount, I don't, I don't think it's appropriate to ask people to, to take a cut like that.
Yeah, I guess what I'm saying is when we're talking about moving some of the salaries up above, like up to 75, I mean, it's kind of a give and take here, where, wouldn't it be safer to say, rather than asking some salaries to come down, not bringing the salaries up?
No, because I want to, they need this, the budget, the organization needs to get to where it's a sustainable city organization where we can recruit at a certain level. And, you know, a salary for, you know, so, salary for, for the community development to take on the task of managing that organization, I, that salary just has to come up, right? And in order to recruit an engineer, you know, we've got to put a salary at 70,000. It, that's a, I'm not sure we'll get, be able to find anybody at 70,000. But it, the, the salary, that any, any, you know, donation of salary would be a small percentage off of what I would, would want to be a professional level salary.
Yes, I guess, how many of those salaries are we going to ask to come down? Is it just one or two, or is it?
So there aren't, and, and that's, the number, it's only, it's, and this is small, it's like $30,000 or something. Because it's, it's, let me just find my- Yeah, let me just pull my note. So there are, one, two, three, four. There's, I think there's, it's a, it's 10 to 12 salaries that would be. So it'd be the, and that, those are the, the, it would be the, you know, ca, cabinet level and some below, just below cabinet level. Yeah, I, you can ask, I can ask, you know, the police and fire chiefs, but I, I wouldn't, you know, wouldn't be able to ask or can ask, but I wouldn't. That would, it would be really just like kind of that 10 to 12 folks that, that earn over 70.
Okay, and then moving, then, then moving down, I mean, when it comes to the revenues that are projected, if they come out a little bit better, we'll be using less of that, that contingency fund. What are our, what's the, the minimum maximum there when it comes to the use of the contingency fund?
Well, so we're, so what you, what you guys have is a proposal to, to use to pull over five of that and put 1 million into the OPEB trust. We do, we very much want to start that OPEB trust and put a million dollars into it. If you look at the, your revenues sheet, you know, look, we're projecting local taxes to come under, you know, through 3.7 million dollars under what was budgeted in 2020. If we can get, if we could get, we realize 3 million of that. If, you know, delinquent, real, the delinquent real estate is also, if you look up a little bit above that, you know, the difference than what we're budgeting versus what was in the 2020 budget is over $2 million. We haven't seen a normal year in this seat. So we don't, I, I think that those numbers were inflated, to be honest. Those revenue numbers in 2020, I think there were inflated. Excuse me, I, they seem, they seem to be inflated. And, but it's possible though, I mean, we haven't had a year where people were, were paying a lot of delinquent taxes. You know, maybe that'll surprise to the upside. So there is, again, because we've, we've been conservative in these revenue projections, there is room for, for success. It's just hard to project. And again, we're, we want to show you the, the conservative projections, the risks, the not fun stuff. It would be disingenuous and we're responsible for us to come in with some bright sunny picture of, of 2021. In this, you know, again, option A, raise taxes. I don't think this is the time to do that to the residents of Scranton and given the, the economic environment to-
Yeah, no, I understand, I guess I'm playing catch-up a little there because when we, you know, on Monday, it was 1.5, we were, we were going to take 1.5 and-
Right there with you and the catch-up, because it's, that was a-
So I guess, I guess after Councilman Gahan was speaking about that, about that trust is when I was starting to put two, two and two together on that one. So when we're looking at what, what's going to cause us to use some of that, if, if we choose to go that route, it's going to be those local taxes and the, and the delinquent real estates.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're the big drivers.
Those are the bigots.
They're always the big drivers, yeah.
And Carl, could you give me a breakdown of the, the Act 511? How many, how many taxes are in there?
I can put it up on the screen, there's a load.
Yeah, so that's like the earned income tax, the LST.
Yeah, there's-
As I was looking, which one was the one that took the big hit? I mean, earned income tax, um, should have pretty much stayed the same, correct?
Carl.
There you go, can you see that? But there's the, that's the local tax.
You guys see it? You get the- You get transfer taxes, wage tax, delinquent rate, wage, mercantile, business provision.
Carl, you can kind of pull that in to get the comparison, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, oh, we took a pause here. Do we want to continue on with the presentation and then?
Yeah, we could.
Okay.
Yeah, so you, well, obviously, we'll, you guys will have all that detail. But yeah, it's the, it's the, it's the wage.
Yeah.
Yes, it's the earned income tax that is the, is really driving that, that delta between last year and this year, or, yeah, a normal year and what we predict for next year.
So we talked about the, the grants, sorry, earlier on. And again, that's one of the reasons why, you know, we're bolstering up the community developments group and bringing in the, the grant manager, you know, with the OECD folks, I'll just skip through this. But here we are, there's, we have a list of grants that are currently, that we're pursuing. So it's around, say, 14 million awarded to community partners, around 17 million applied for, for the community partner applications. And you've got a breakdown there of the, of all the details. And that's the thing, also the thing about this is we're, we're now tracking this in the sense of kind of what's, what's available for us that's applicable to, you know, to the city. We're tracking the, we're tying the applications to the, obviously, specific, specific line items, funding, you know, capital projects. And then obviously, we're also, obviously managing these now on a weekly basis in terms of when we put the applications in, in terms of the amount that we've asked, the amount that maybe we can, we can realize. But again, this is forecasting itself in the sense of when the decision's made, but then also when are the revenues actually realized? And as we found, you know, we saw this year with the CARES Act, you know, we, we still haven't received that money, although it's due, it's due to us now. So it, this is quite unpredictable, which is why, you know, we didn't include this, you know, in the budget line item. So these are the things that again, we'll, we'll report on, on a, you know, obviously, a monthly basis kind of minimum. And I was part of the kind of governance process going forward in terms of the, you know, what's applied for, what the status of those applications and the projected realization of that revenue.
Can you slide down, slide down, Carl, so I can see the topic? I don't know what that-
I bet.
Okay, community grants, okay.
Sure, yeah, so these are things that-
How about that, that, the LSA trip park, what's that one?
On the right-hand side?
Yeah.
So they're pending, yeah. I don't, I don't know the detail behind that, the specifics. But we can get those, for each of these, obviously, we've got all, the applications are available, you know, you'd like to see them. Yeah.
You guys, you guys will have the new, I believe, the new batch of LSA grant applications on your agenda next Tuesday. This week.
Okay, um, can, can we just talk for a minute about kind of, and then I think we'll wrap it up in a little while? In terms of the big picture items, this is, I, I just want to bring up three or four things and then everyone else can ask questions. So Carl, you, this $5 million in contingency, you baked that in from what I can see into the inter-fund transfers, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so what you're basically saying is without that $5 million, you, you don't have a balanced budget. You need that $5 million to balance the budget.
Correct.
The, some of your assumptions here, that, like the, the garbage fee, the landfill refuse fees, you had that increasing by 1.2 million dollars. Now, I understand the, the plan is to roll the refuse fee into the real estate tax bill.
Yeah.
Can you talk about how you came up with that increase, that much of an increase in 1.2 million dollars?
Yeah, so that's based on the, onto the base for the, the fee collection. And the, we're anticipating that we'll be significantly increasing the collection as it goes in, onto the, onto the real estate bill. And obviously, that will be collected now more on a quarterly basis rather than just twice a year. So the, the other thing is that is the, the realization of those revenues is we've geared up in terms of, you know, ensuring that those, that those, you know, be paid. But I'll give, I'll give you the breakdown of the, the map behind that, if you want that.
Okay. And you're, that's assuming you're keeping the, the, you're keeping the fee at $300?
Yes, that is correct.
Carl, I'm sorry, again, can you slide back up there a second?
Yeah.
The other big picture thing I wanted to bring up was the, the payroll prep tax. So I, unless I'm missing it, I don't see it in here as a revenue line items, is that correct?
That's correct, it's not in there.
Now, can you give us an update as to like where we are with that and what the, the overall plan is? Because my concern is that if we wait until, if we wait any longer because of the coronavirus, or if we wait till next year and, and this is accomplished, we'll have a lower base to work from. So wouldn't this year's revenue be better to, to use as the base than next year, which is going to be lower? So wouldn't this year's revenue be better to, to use as the base than next year, which is gonna be lower?
Yeah, no, it would. And this is what, obviously, what we, we've had a, like a committee, a small committee working on this, obviously with support of PEL and, and also Councilman Donovan Hughes is part of that, part of that team as well. And where we're at right now is the, we've done the calculation to the base rate. We're now, we've looked at the analysis of the, the winners and the losers. Obviously, with the payroll tax, certain businesses will, will benefit and obviously, a lot of businesses won't, depending on the, the number of employees. So those businesses which are higher revenue realization per person, obviously will kind of benefit. And those businesses that are lower revenue per person are, are the ones that are going to, are gonna suffer. So right now, where that is, is we've got some, a wider, a wider data set which is being, being analyzed. So we get a more thorough picture of the, the types of businesses that will, will benefit and those that won't. But the next step then will be to really, we need to put that, then I think you put it in front of our elected officials, because the key thing here is there will be, with payroll tax, there will be some businesses that win and some that lose. And that's something that certainly, I think the elected officials need to have a voice in. And also, of course, the, the school district, which are obviously a big portion of this. So the school districts are, have obviously, have been involved on the committee. And they're, they're also having these same discussions.
And do you have any idea when we might be able to take action on that? When, when council will be able to, to vote on something or have some piece of legislation in front of us? Like a timeline?
On the payroll, payroll tax. Yeah, so the, it's, the commissioner that's running, PELA running the committee and obviously the, the, well, yeah, the hearing for the, for us allow us to use that tax easily. But that's fine, so.
So can you hear that, Bill said? The, the payroll hearing to enable us to do it is November 30th, I believe.
Yeah, and that, that's okay. That, that just allows us to, to apply that tax if we want to. We don't have to. The key thing is, is I think, I think what Bill's asking is right, is that we need to put that in front of council. And also, I think the school district also need to, I think, to talk about it, the board, to see if that's something they want to do. So the analysis, which we're waiting for, I don't know the status of that. I'll have to check in on that in terms of where it is. But then we need to sit down, obviously, I think, with council, with the school board. And it could be done, I think, as quickly as next week. And I thought we'd get that analysis back.
Okay. And last question for me. In this year's budget, as you know, under sale of assets, there was about a million and a half dollars that was pegged in there for money that would come in through a sale of receivables.
That is correct.
And we have not seen anything yet. And I don't, at this point, I, I don't, I don't, I don't know if we will see anything, but can you give us an update on that? I mean, that was a big part of the, the 2020 budget and it was revenue that, that we, I think, were relying on.
Yes, you're right. So that, you're right, that, that revenue will not be realized this year. The, the collection of the, of those delinquents, delinquent fees, that you seize now is, we've now assigned a third party for that collection. They're now going through the, the kind of onboarding and the next kind of third, also, yeah. Oh, you haven't, you haven't seen the legislation yet, right? So, yeah, so we, we've chosen the, the partner. Legislation is being, is being written. And the, I anticipate that will, we won't, we won't see that revenue till next year, right? When, when we looked at the, the timeline, it takes roughly 30 to 40 days for them to onboard, get the data sets, which will be through December. So when we first start seeing that revenue, it will be next year.
You guys will get the legislation for that contract soon.
And who, who was the, who was it with, who was it with, the contract?
The Portnoy Law.
No, I was referring to the, the sale of receivables. So we would receive that money upfront.
Well, you'll, you'll see this in a memo from Carl with that legislation. The, none of the bidders were.
That was not.
Going for an upfront payment to us.
Okay.
For that. So I, I think, you know, we've been, you, we've been talking about this all year. I don't, that, that revenue line item was, that, you know, I don't think that was a realistic revenue line.
Yeah, we had some good quality people bidding and firms bidding on that, but none of them offered an option for upfront.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions from anyone?
When it comes to these grants, who is it, is it that one grant writer that's writing all of these grants?
No, so we have, so OECD also do the grant writing for OECD. So, yeah, we have several people that are writing the grants.
All right. And how about the, is the early trash payment discount still gonna occur this year?
Yes, it is.
Yes. It's also.
Yeah.
It's also important to remember on the refuse fee that there is a current lawsuit against the city based on the refuse fee. So we explored some options and the, the end result was that the, the best thing for the city was to leave it as is for now. But we could, we'd be happy to talk with, you know, we could have a, a session with the attorneys offline if you guys would like to do that.
Okay. Any other questions from anyone? Last question for me, sorry, one more. Will, and the document that you submitted, under the actual numbers, most, like, only a few of them are filled in. I'm assuming that when we get the actual budget, that all of these are gonna be filled in, correct?
They will, yeah, at least it didn't carry across, my apologies. Yeah.
Oh, and we usually receive a letter from, from our recovery coordinator, you know, basically saying that the budget falls in line with the exit plan. Have you received that yet? And when will council receive that?
Carl spoke with the coordinator tonight. So I don't know if that, sometime, I think it's due on Monday, he said.
Yeah.
All right. Well, obviously, we will take a look at the, the budget tomorrow with all the figures in it. And we, does anybody else have any questions before we wrap this up? Okay. So we will take a look at that, obviously, and, and study it and go line item by line item like we usually do. And we look forward to having another one of these sessions then next Thursday. And I think this is good to get an overall look at, at what you are proposing and kind of the big picture, big picture items. And we appreciate it.
Well, we appreciate your guys' time and thanks for taking the time to walk through some of the details prior to tonight. It's just, it helps us, it's helped us a lot already to be able to, to get your questions and understand what other questions might be out there. So we appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Have a good night, everyone.